Welcome everyone to the September 30th, 2024 meeting of the Planning and Zoning Board here in Easton. This is, as you can tell, it's a remote hearing. I'll go ahead and read through the remote meetings procedures. To use Zoom, you'll need to use the link on the agenda, download the Zoom application. While the board members or commissioners and applicants will be on video and audio, public participants invited to speak will be also on video or audio. Public lines will be muted throughout the meeting to allow the board to conduct business. For general meetings, not hearings, and only for items under which the chair solicits public comment. Members of the public participating in Zoom may submit a written question via text chat, provided that they include their full name and address for the record. Members of the public viewing meeting on ECAT may submit questions in writing via email as well at All votes will be by roll call for public hearings. During the public testimony portion of the meeting, members of the public joining via Zoom may be recognized using the raise hand function down under Participants. If you're joining only by phone, you can press star nine to raise your hand. Please keep your comments and testimony limited to the specific point of the hearing. As in any public hearing, testimony offered must be related to the hearing. Off-topic conversations or commentary may be subject to stopping. The Chair reserves the right to end the testimony if anyone does not follow these instructions. When all business indicated on the agenda has been completed, we will vote to adjourn. So to get this meeting started tonight, we will do a roll call. Weeks.
Here.
Kid.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Zygmunt. Zygmunt.
You're mute.
Here.
And Ketum.
Present.
And Stetson is present as well. Alright, the first matter for tonight is an internally illuminated sign at 690 Depot Street. Planet Fitness sign. Stephanie, do we have anyone to present?
Suzanne, Anne Ramsey.
Anne Ramsey.
Okay. Can you guys hear me?
We can hear you just fine. Please state your name for the record and tell us about your presentation.
Anne Ramsey from Viewpoint Sign and Honning. I'm representing Planet Fitness. They are trying to put an illuminated Planet Fitness sign on the front of the building and just change some panels in the two pylon signs that are onsite already.
Okay. Do you want to show us the sign on your screen? Or do you want to make any other?
Yeah, I'm definitely gonna try that. I've never had to do that before, so this is a first, but I'm gonna try to do it. Oh, there you go. Alright. Can you see it?
We can't. You.
Can? Oh, perfect. So that's the sign. It is under the 100 square feet that is allowed by the zoning laws. It is illuminated inside, facelit. And it is aluminum poly, just like a regular tenant sign.
Okay. Is that, is that all you want to say about the sign at the moment?
Well, I think it's to code, so I don't think there's really a lot to say. I'm not sure how the town does it.
Well, we generally do it through special permit here. So that's probably why you are here.
Usually, yeah, usually it's just a normal, normal hearing against the town. But I'm not exactly sure what you'd want to hear about it because it was designed to code. So I think that's pretty explanatory by itself.
Okay. Stephanie, any comments?
Yeah, I just want to make a correction. The internally illuminated signs get reviewed and approved by the board, but it is not by a special permit.
Thank you for the correction.
Yep. And so again, I believe what I heard is this is like a box sign. It is not, they're not channel letters.
It's channel letters. Right on.
They are channel letters. Okay, which is one of the things that the board prefers. And so on the space that you have in your rendering, where you show it on the building and the white, will the background be white or will it blend in with the roofing material? Or the color of the roofing?
There's no backer behind it, so I'm not exactly sure what you're talking about.
Okay, so we, in our packet that Suzanne sent around and probably accompanied your application, there is a mock-up that shows the sign against the building there. Oh, mine shows it as having a white background. Yours does not.
No, there's no background because there's no backer. The channel letters themselves are right against the facade.
Okay, that answers my question.
Would you like to see the pylon signs too? Or do you already know what they look like?
Your presentation, you can certainly show us.
So those are just polycarbonate signs. I don't believe they're... I don't think the pylon signs are lit, but if they are... I mean, it says illuminated on here, but they're awful skinny. But we're just changing the faces. We're not changing anything else about it.
Okay. Yeah, Stephanie, in the packet that I got, it did have that, that kind of almost looks like a white backer.
Yes.
So that's a good clarification. Alright, board members, any questions, comments, observations, motions?
A motion to approve the Planet Fitness illuminated sign as presented. Wolf.
Kevin, second.
Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. Ketum.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Weeks.
Aye.
Zygmunt, if your Zoom issues.
I'm good.
Okay, good. And Stetsons and I as well. Okay.
Good. Don't forget about me.
Oh, Kid, I'm sorry. You dropped off on my screen for a minute. Apologies.
Kid. Aye. Aye.
It's unanimous.
Perfect, thank you very much.
Thank you. Alright, next up is the Taco Bell Continued Site Plan Review. Stephanie, I saw a note come around earlier that one of the hearings was a requested postponement. Was it this one?
No.
Okay. Very good.
No, it was the next one.
Okay, fine.
And I see Mark Raymond, who's here for this. And we'll promote him to panelist. And I saw Nicole Duquette. There she is. She's back again.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I believe my engineer Nicole Duquette is here as well.
Yep, looks like she just, looks like she just joined. Looks like she's trying to figure out the audio. And the video. Okay.
Hello, good evening. So yeah, I'm having a little bit of freezing going on in my computer, so I apologize. Nicole Duquette, Freeman Peterson. I'm hoping that technology is going to work for me here tonight. So we were back a couple of months ago. We were here before you regarding a Taco Bell restaurant, proposed Taco Bell restaurant. And since then, we've addressed all of Beta, the third-party review engineers' comments. So we didn't want to come back until those were addressed and we had a sign-off letter for those. I'm going to share my screen just so that we can have the current rendering. So the current rendering, this is the current rendering. Sorry, hold on. This is the current rendering. That was the old one. So a couple of changes that we've made per comments with Beta. The drainage has been changed to an underground system. So we now have an underground system here and an underground system here to take place of the infiltration basin that was at that corner. So that was one of the big things that happened on the plan. The other things that were changed per the board comments were we added the sidewalk connection closer to the intersection. We also added a bicycle rack near the front of the store. And then we added the stockade fence along this plan east. Sorry, the east property line over here. So now our stockade fence goes all around the back of the property to buffer all the butters. The other thing we did is we changed the landscaping. One, we changed the landscaping for this front thing, front area, because now we don't have the basin in the front. So we didn't need to plant the basin. But we did add additional plantings to the side property line so that we could add an additional buffer. So there was a comment that most of the trees on this property are deciduous. So the comment was to add some evergreen trees to the buffer. So we've added those and kept the deciduous too on this property as we felt with talking to Stephanie that that was important to give it a good mix of a buffer, both deciduous and evergreen. Other than that, I believe those were the big changes that occurred to the plan. And both Mark and I are here to answer any further questions.
It looks like you addressed most of the comments that I know came from the board the last time we saw you. The one question that I think was not addressed was there was a request for some outdoor seating. Could you comment on that?
So yeah, I can comment on that. So at the time before we redesigned this, the only place that was possible for outdoor seating would have been along that corner. And we didn't feel as the property owners that that was really a safe alternative. So we did not do that at this time. In regards to seating and benches, we could possibly do something along the... Where she's got the red and the blue and the yellow cars along that lawn line. It's further back, it's isolated, it's separated. But we don't typically put outdoor seating on our properties in the Northeast. We don't do patios because they're limited use. But that's why we decided not to go with that because it is a large liability. And we were told it was not going to be a contingency.
Alright, Stephanie, any comments from you?
No, that was going to be my one. I was going to mention that the board had asked for outdoor seating. And you know, one of the things, it looks like, could you describe the plantings that are shown in kind of the formal planting structure on the corner? The northwest corner?
Sure, let me bring up the plan. This might take a little while, I apologize.
Okay.
Because I think one of the things we talked about early in the meeting, the hearing process or meeting process was that, you know, we want to make sure that this is aesthetically pleasing in the district and along that corner. And they are proposing quite a few large tree plantings. And the internal plantings next to the, right next to the building.
Alright, took a little while, but I got it. Okay, so as far as the plantings go, you're talking about this corner in here, right? So it looks like we've got all the shrubs and the daylilies. So there's the perennials, the blue stem, some ornamental grass and daylilies, as well as the spirea pontentilla and ninebark and inkberry. So they're all native drought, salt tolerant species. Okay.
Any other comments from you, Stephanie?
No, it does look like they do have native species, but they look to be varietal. So true native species are preferred. They actually provide a better food source for wildlife. Birds and things of that nature.
Okay.
And again, Beta did complete their review and found that with the revisions that were made, the stormwater management system is in compliance.
Okay, great. Board members. Comments, questions? Alright. Open it up to the public just briefly, see if anyone in the audience has any comments on this.
It looks like, again, if people could identify themselves because Dale's iPhone doesn't tell us... I mean, it tells most of us who it is, but...
Okay, you can bring them on.
I did, I did.
Okay, great.
He should be allowed to talk. In fact, I think I...
Okay, I think you join me as a panelist. Can you hear me now?
We can hear you. We can hear you now.
Thank you.
For yours.
Yeah, Dale Carister, 21 South Street. I'll be very brief. And in light of the ZBA decision, I don't know what discretion is still afforded to the Planning and Zoning Board as far as site plan review. To some extent, this comment is going to be directed to the applicant. As folks are aware, you know, I've been raising concerns about the traffic issues and so forth for quite a while. Just today, there was an accident on Route 106 by Fellowship Church and traffic was backed up for a long, long way. It took 15 minutes to get from the mobile at five corners back to my house at 21 South Street. So I would just ask and implore if there's anything the board can do or anything the applicant can do to help reduce the likelihood of that kind of a bottleneck in light of those things associated with people using the drive-through. I don't know what that solution would be, but I just wanted to bring it to the board's attention. Thank you.
And Dale, I think if you can, let's see, I just want to make sure I don't get rid of you, but...
That's okay.
I'm going to put you on hold.
Okay. Do we have any, anyone else, Stephanie?
Hold on. Let's see. 10 D's.
I think...
No, I do not see anyone else with their hand raised.
Alright, then, I mean, at this point, I will entertain a motion.
I'm happy to motion, but I'm not exactly sure how to phrase it. Is it motion to ex... Do we need to close the... No, it's not public.
No, I think it would just be at this point, it would be a motion to approve the site plan. If that's the direction you're thinking.
Yep, that was what I was thinking.
Don't we need to close the public hearing first?
This is just site plan review. I'm also, we don't, we didn't open a public hearing on this one.
Yeah, site plan review does not require a public hearing.
Okay.
So motion to accept the site plan review as presented? Wolf? And I can't remember. My apologies.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Can we add what Stephanie mentioned, that they do true natives instead of varietals?
Sure. Do we want to, if that's okay with the movement, I think maybe you can just amend your motion.
Motion to amend with, the motion with, accept the site plan with true varietals?
True native.
True natives instead of varietals.
Second, second for the amendment.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. Kid.
Aye.
Weeks.
Aye.
Zygmunt.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Ketum.
Aye.
And Stetsons and I as well.
So I'm sorry, Bob. I do have one question, which I think I have the answer to, but it was brought to my attention today and I just want to assure this is the case. On the screen, and let me see if I can get a pointer going. How do I do that? I can't remember. But on the plan, you will see in the Bay Road, Foundry Street corner, there is, and it's barely visible, it says Fulters Corner. Oh, thank you for zooming in. And it points to a sign that identifies this area as Fulters Corner. And it appears to be fully within the right-of-way. But if the applicant could confirm that and that nothing is going to happen to that sign, that would be appreciated.
We will take a look at that absolutely and make sure that we accommodate.
It's, again, it's clearly identified on the plan, so it was definitely observed by whoever did the land surveying out there.
Yes, that's fine.
And maybe we'll add that as a condition, Bob?
That's fine. I mean, if that's something that should be on there, then yeah, I would prefer to have it on the, as a condition on the decision. Just so it's clear going forward.
Thank you, you are going.
So can I just, can I ask for clarification in regards to this sign? Will this be something we're required to maintain or are we just being required to?
Not remove.
Not remove. So in some parts of construction, it may need to temporarily be removed or, but we would remove it, protect it, store it, and we would put it back at the end of construction. But I can't guarantee that we wouldn't have to remove it at some point.
As long as it gets reinstalled. So we'll add all of that. Yep.
That's fine.
Stephanie, do we need to, we need to supplement the?
Yeah, the motion.
Yeah.
Yeah, probably.
Alright, so should it be a motion to supplement the approval by adding a condition that the Fulters Corner sign will remain except as necessary during construction?
Correct.
Motion to do exactly what Bob said? Wolf.
Kevin, second for the amendment.
Okay, any further discussion? Alright, we'll run through it again. Weeks.
Aye.
Kid.
Aye.
Zygmunt.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Ketum.
Aye.
And Stetsons and I as well. Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Alright, so next up is 531 Foundry Street, the Continued Public Hearing. So this is the one that requested the continuance, Stephanie?
Yes.
Were they asking to postpone until October 8th?
Yes.
Okay. May I have a motion?
Motion to postpone 531 Foundry to the next meeting. Zygmunt.
Second, Wolf.
Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. Weeks.
Aye.
Kid.
Aye.
Zygmunt.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Ketum.
Aye.
And Stetsons and I as well. Okay, we're moving right through it tonight. Onto Site Plan Review for 492R Bay Road, Sean Flynn Landscaping. Do we have Mr. Feria presenting?
Yep.
Yes, sir.
Alright, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
The floor is yours.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Board member Scott Feria from Home Grid Engineering, representing Sean Flynn and Flynn's Family Farm at 492R Bay Road. And I'm going to attempt to share my plans, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, please.
Alright. As you can see, Flynn Family Farms, a longstanding agricultural building in the town along Bay Road, the corner of Bay and Prospect Street. It's a large parcel of land, a little bit more than 20 acres. Mr. Flynn owns some of budding properties as well. So he has a considerable piece of property. The primary reason we're here for site plan approval, Sean would like to kind of increase the retail footprint of his existing farm. Currently, he has a small farm stand up near the road and he has about six greenhouses right in that area. And then there's various structures, chicken coops, things like that throughout the property. Mr. Flynn is proposing a 1,500 square foot retail shop. I'm just going to go to my color rendering, if I may. A 1,500 square foot retail shop that will be placed roughly in the location of the first two existing greenhouses. In addition to the retail shop, you can see we have a considerable amount of green space that we're proposing. We're also proposing 18 parking spaces for the retail customers. With the existing structure that's in place that we're raising to build this one, the project falls under a redevelopment under stormwater management because of the no additional impervious area for the rooftops. But also, excuse me, also because of the increase in the landscaping that we're doing primarily in the front. There's about, going to be about a 30-foot green space right off of Bay Road. Then the double row of parking. And then about another 30 feet or so to a concrete patio in the structure itself. So the farm stand that'll be in use to really enhance the Flynn Family Farm retail shop will really increase the amount of green space on the property. We meet all of the other zoning requirements, site plan requirements. We have a roof infiltration system proposed for the roof runoff. We also have an onsite septic system proposed for the small septic system for the retail use. And the existing greenhouses will remain in place. We also do have a couple of lights on the property that will remain in place. They'll end up falling. They're kind of within the existing parking area currently. With this redesign, those lights will fall within the green space. So those lights will remain for the winter time and holiday seasons when his retail shop might be open after dark. That's really a quick rundown. We did receive a review from the Planner Department on Friday afternoon. There was a couple of items that the planner was looking for us to address that we certainly have no problem doing, just clarifying the direction of the stormwater management and how we comply with stormwater management guidelines for a redevelopment. So we'll certainly take care of those issues and get that to the Planning Department in the next couple of days, Mr. Chairman.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Feria. Stephanie?
So Scott talked about the stormwater management and if he can get those, that would be very much appreciated. The other suggestion I had, I believe that there's, you know, seasonal activity on the farm where there's increased traffic. I believe that Mr. Flynn sells Christmas trees during Christmas time. So if he could just talk about overflow parking during those periods when he has more customers coming to the site?
Sure.
The parking's being accommodated.
Yeah, we have about 200 feet right in this area here off of the gravel road that essentially goes around the greenhouses. So I think if overflow parking is needed, we would be able to park right off of that gravel road. Probably about another 20 spaces could easily fit in this location. There's a couple of trees, but there's spaces in between the trees and then a larger stretch that we could fit on. There's a, a couple of trees, but there's spaces in between the trees and then a larger stretch, uh, that could, uh, that we could fit on.
Okay.
Um, and, and if, a- again, I meant to include this in my report. What type of lighting are, are you planning? Is this pole lights, um, strung lights?
They're, they're currently pole lights. And there would, there would be lighting on the building as well, on the, on the new building.
And are the pole lights, do they downcast? Are they dark sky friendly? I mean, we're not talking, um...
I, I think we would, yeah, I think we would have to, uh, upgrade them to dark sky compliant, uh, lights at, at this point. They're, uh, I think they're, I think they're essentially a, a streetlight type of a, of a light. So I, I think we would wanna upgrade those to a dark sky compliant light.
Those are my only comments, Bob.
Alright, thank you. Board members?
I have a quick question. The, um, the Christmas tree sales, those are all pre-cut. I, I don't think there's a tree farm there where people cut, uh, uh, their own trees, is that correct?
I, I believe they're pre-cut, yes.
Okay, so it wouldn't be like there'd be a huge rush the day before, day after Thanksgiving or something like, some of the Christmas tree farms that open up and, you know, create, create quite a, quite a bit of traffic?
Hopefully there's a huge rush, but that doesn't create a lot of traffic.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
I have a question about the, um, the entrance. So from the parking lot, there's sort of that U-shaped, um, grass protrusion sort of in the middle. Uh, nope, if you go lower, right into the center and then to your right.
Oh, right here.
Yeah, right there. Is there going to be some sort of pathway over the grass into the shop? Or, I can't really tell if there's anything drawn there and I can't tell from the pictures that I have that aren't colored. Or are people just gonna be going over the grass?
We're a little bit, um, I guess you might say a little bit vague in, in the final landscaping plans just because, you know, Mr. Flynn wanted to have a little bit of, of leeway and I guess, uh, just some artistic leeway to, to, uh, to dress it up after the, after the parking's in and after the building's in. But there'll certainly be a, a walkway to get from the parking area, uh, to the, the large concrete area in the front.
Okay, so it will be sort of, I'm guessing something that would be ADA friendly to accommodate folks that are using the handicapped space?
Yes.
Correct.
Do we normally require, d- do we normally require that that be shown on the plan, Stephanie? Some sort of an ADA compliant, um, path, pathway?
Um, yes, they show an ADA parking space.
Right.
It's being accessible.
Yeah.
But it doesn't, it doesn't show a, what, how, it doesn't show a ramp or walkway.
We, we'll, we'll certainly make that change, Mr. Chairman, that's a...
Okay.
Just to make sure that it is in fact on the plan. Obviously, it would be part of the construction, but we'll make sure we show it.
Okay, great. Any other board members? Have any, um, any commentary from the public? Alright, doesn't look like it. Um, so Stephanie?
Oh, I'm sorry, um...
I have a question.
I was, I was taking notes.
Oh, hold on.
Picture her.
That's okay, almost.
No, no hands raised, done.
So, uh, on the plan, it shows two entrances. One will be entry, the other will be exit, or both of them are exit and entry?
Yeah, the, the two entrances, they're, they're existing entrances. As you can see, they're, they're shown as paved entrances. Uh, the first entrance, the northernmost entrance, uh, i- is an entrance to go around. Uh, we really wouldn't be looking to, to specify, uh, one way in, one way out, or an entry or an exit. They're, uh, both of the entrances are 24 and 26 feet wide, so they're, they're plenty wide for, for two-way traffic. Uh, in fact, the northerly most entrance also, uh, acts as Mr. Flynn and his family's, uh, access to and from the house at 492 where they reside.
Okay. I think it's okay. You don't need signs either.
Alright. Um, Stephanie, on this one, do we, do we need to wait just for the, whatever comments you had so that any issues are addressed there and?
I would, um...
Maybe get the ADA pathway on there as well, or what do you think?
The board could approve it with the condition that the permit will not be issued until we've received, um, the stormwater management documents and the plan has been revised to show the ADA access.
On, on the dark lighting.
And it's the dark sky friendly lighting.
Okay, board members, so we can either put it over or we could do a motion with some conditions in it as Stephanie has just, uh, suggested.
This is not, you know, normally on a stormwater project where if we don't have the information in hand, it's a, a little larger project. This is mo- again, it is redevelopment. Um, they are providing more stormwater management that currently exists on the site.
Uh, motion, motion to approve, uh, provided that the conditions, uh, are fulfilled and put on the plans and, uh, give it to us. Kevin?
Second, Ziggman?
Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. Weeks?
Aye.
Kid?
Aye.
Ziggman?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Ketum?
Aye.
And Stetsons and I as well. Thank you guys.
Thank you very much for the help, folks. Have a good evening.
You as well.
Thank you.
Alright, next up is our discussion about zoning amendments again. And I know we do need to, um, address, I guess, the stormwater management issue tonight with a vote if, if we're going to bring that to the public hearing. But Stephanie, what do you, what do you think the best way to go through these are? Cause I, I would like to at least have some, just a little, little bit of discussion among the board about each of them.
Yep.
Um, just some commentary going into the, the, the public hearings, um, for our next hearing. But should we just go through from top to bottom, or what do you think?
That's how I would propose doing it, um, and I can share my screen.
That would be great.
Yeah, so that either the board members and, and the public can review it or you can review as we go. But I think that, you know, I'm, if you have a printout, but... So, let me do that. And so what I, so can every, I, is what you're seeing, yes?
Yep.
Okay, so, um, what I'd like to do is just go through, go through the expla- what the zoning is being proposed, um, the explanation and what the change will be. And then we can have some board discussion around that. So the first, um, proposed article is to rezone 388 Depot Street, which is the site of the now disused Center School. Um, everyone will recall that when the new K-2 Blanche Ames School went online, the, um, former schools, Moreau Hall, Center School, and of course, uh, Park had already been demolished, were taken offline and the town voted at town meeting to authorize the select board to dispose of the property with the primary, um, intent to seek proposals that would result in the reuse of the site as a community center or recreational facility. Um, in order for that, um, to comply with zoning, indoor/outdoor recreation is allowed within the, a business district with a special permit. Indoor recreation is not allowed in the residential district at all, which is what it's currently zoned. So, the property needs to be rezoned, um, to accommodate that. And I will tell you that the select board has gone out, um, with a request for proposals which were due today. They received one responsive proposal that is being reviewed for technical compliance and the proposer will be asked to present to the select board at their meeting on October 7th. So this is in anticipation of a successful response to the proposals.
Now, can I, so we, we rezoned this area a couple of years ago and, um, can you just, wh- so what is the change? Because I, I, I know we had sort of contemplated that there was gonna be like a nonprofit use or something like that. We changed the zoning accordingly. And now it seems like it's gonna be a similar, if not the same use, but potentially a different...
Right.
A different user. Can you just kind of walk us through?
Yes.
That dynamic?
So at the time, um, it was thought that the interested party and, and the YMCA had expressed some interest. They're a nonprofit organization and it was thought that a nonprofit organization would probably be the likely proposer. Um, that the YMCA wasn't moving forward and there, um, the town didn't wanna limit it to just, um, a nonprofit organization and commercial. So there's a difference between nonprofit in the zoning that would be a, like a use as a community center, um, as long as the indoor/outdoor activities were not too noisy. So that kind of fit with the YMCA or a nonprofit organization under the residential zoning. But in the residential zoning, indoor recreation is not allowed at all, even with a special permit. And under the business zoning, indoor and outdoor recreation is allowed by a special permit.
But just so I'm clear, the, the idea is that when it previously, because it was connected to the idea of a, of a community, community center, that the zoning permitted for this type of a use, whereas now if it's being opened up to more of a, I mean, just, I guess, call it a, a private owner or developer, um, it, it needs to be characterized in a different way. Is that, is, cause it, isn't it fair to say that the, the, the use being proposed or contemplated here is the same, it's just a different user?
Yes, it's just, it, it would just be the entity, mhm, is.
Okay.
Basically, what you are asking is to change this specific property to commercial.
To business, to the business zone.
To a business, uh, zone instead of a residential. And change the map accordingly, only for this property, right?
Yes.
Doesn't say that anywhere.
It's, update the zoning map to inclu- include 388 Depot Street in Business District. So we're only identifying, if I am understanding your comment, Amos, um, it would just be 388 Depot Street?
Only.
Correct.
And it will not be connected to any other bit, it will be an island.
Essentially.
Do we need to specify anything for the carve-out or the, um, pond?
That is, uh, that has already been addressed.
Okay.
And it was a- addressed in the proposals.
I guess, uh, i- if you do that, uh, I don't know where the setbacks should be, the boundaries. Uh, because there is so much residential surrounding that property and a border, that, that will be kind of a sensitive issue, isn't it?
I, I'm sorry, Amos, I'm not hearing all of what you're saying.
Uh, because this will be an island surrounded by residential abiders, uh, the setback and the distance, the buffer zone in between whatever they are going to leave there and the properties, i- it will become impossible. So, but we don't have anything to, to do to take care of that problem, right?
Well, they, so any development would need to, um, comply with the dimensional setbacks, the side yard, front yard, and that rear yard setbacks. And there's also an, um, a wetland area in back of the property and I believe it might extend around the sides that will not be developed. I'm gonna sit back and bring up.
Are the, are the setbacks in business are the same as in residential? On the view of size, background, etc.?
So, in the business district, the front yard setback is 50 feet. The rear is 40 feet and the side yard setbacks are 25. So they're pretty much doubled these setback requirements for the residential, residential development.
So tha- that should probably satisfy, right? Okay.
And it looks to me, if I'm understanding that map that you're showing, Stephanie, that, that there's sort of a natural buffer out back as well because of the wetland areas?
Yeah, that's what I'm, I'm sorry, I'm looking, I forgot, I've got, yes. So that's what I wanted to bring up here. If you can see that, and let me zoom.
You can zoom a little bit just so we can...
Yeah.
Yeah, he's... Coming, he's coming.
Sorry, this is, it runs a little bit slower when he zooms.
Yeah, we, we can, we can see that.
So there's a little bit of a buffer there, but you know, it's the existing, there's the existing neighborhood over to the right.
Right.
And the left, those are some multifamily buildings on the left, right?
Um, you know, I honestly don't know.
That one is apartment on the corner.
Right here?
Yeah, that's apartments, I believe.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I think the more, the more critical is the, uh, the one facing, uh, I guess it's east. Uh, those houses there, uh, depend, de- depend what they put there. I don't know what the setback is, uh, on the east side of the building there. The turnaround on the corner, in between, yeah, right there. No, no, to the, to the right, yeah. Yeah, right there.
Mhm.
That's, that's probably the only one that is really relevant that has there.
Well, and the, the idea of the RFP, correct me if I'm wrong, is that there, that the whole, the goal anyway, is to reuse the building, is that correct?
Uh, not necessarily. It may need to be rebuilt, mhm.
I, I, I was told that the building is in bad shape.
Yes.
Uh, it's not, it's not too cold. And if you need to bring it back to cold, it, it's too much money that it's better to...
Which is why it was...
Demolish and build a new one.
Got it.
So, yes, it is anticipated that, um, the new use would need to demolish and then reconstruct.
The logic say that they will center that building more into the topic of that, who knows? And that will give natural buffer. Depends what it is, it will need parking, it will need all that.
So if I'm understanding correctly, you just need us to make the motion to kind of, uh, move forward with this amendment? Or do, or do you need that?
No, no, the board has already voted to hold a hearing on the amendments on the 8th of October. We're walking through each of them tonight. Um, we've talked about them a bit in the past, but just so the board... Um, we've talked about them a bit in the past, but just so the board understands fully what the proposed amendment is and, and to weigh in.
Perfect. Thanks, Steph.
Do, do you know if the corner yard would bring is exempt from being on the zone? Or that is part of the property? There, there was an agreement that the town will preserve.
This is, right, this is being carved off, and I believe that's already been done. And, and the agreement is that the, um. The agreement will be that the, whoever redevelops this provides parking for.
Okay.
Wink use, but the town has already carved that off and retained that.
It does not.
Retained the skating rink.
Okay, Stephanie, if maybe, uh, we could talk briefly about the, uh, compact neighborhood overlay district item?
Okay, that's. Let me go down to that. Okay. So this is an amendment that would. Strike the language that states. A maximum, let's see, what do we have? That would change the language in two thirty-five dash fifty-one dash one B one B of the compact neighborhood. Uh, Furnace Village Overlay District. Um, to read that dwelling units are to be detached, single-family dwellings, duplexes or triplexes. Each dwelling unit shall not exceed a maximum of eighteen hundred square feet gross floor space. Notwithstanding anything in this bylaw to the contrary, gross floor space or finished living area shall be defined for purposes. Purposes of two thirty-five fifty-one-one of the bylaw as the sum of the areas of the several floors of a building. Measured from the exterior faces of the walls. It shall not include basements, whether finished or unfinished, unenclosed porches or unfinished attics. And so it provides more specificity on what constitutes the eight hundred square feet of gross floor space. And then. The second part of that would be. Let's see, B two A of that section of the bylaw would strike the language. That states a maximum of four dwelling units. Um, I, that change, ah, wait a minute, goes on to the next page. I'm sorry, it's like, that got cut off.
Are you refer, are you referring the, the bedroom?
I'm sorry, on the left-hand side.
On the left side, yeah.
Yes, sorry. A maximum of four dwelling units shall be allowed, the maximum number of bedrooms per dwelling unit shall be two. And it will strike the, um, limitation on the bedrooms. And that in, um, to make the zoning bylaw consistent with other sections of the law. And also to comply with chapter forty A, which is the zoning law, which disallows zoning regulations or restrictions. On the interior area of single-family residential buildings.
Yeah, and the, the idea there is that, and, and I know this has been kind of a long lead item and we've all sort of. Um, you know, heard some of the commentary from Rick Lincoln on, and what he's dealing with over at his project. You know, we, we kind of looked at this as best we can and it, it does look like the way that the, the zoning was initially drafted. It's sort of dubious as to whether it's, it's perfectly legal or not. Um, because you're really not supposed to under forty A, you're really not supposed to be regulating, as Stephanie said, sort of the interior. And I think that this, this bylaw at a minimum goes up to the line. And may very well cross it a little bit by saying, you know, limiting certain bedroom types and, or bedroom numbers, I should say. And, um, possibly with its, with its definition of what the, the gross, uh, living space, uh, should include. So I, I think the goal here is, is to try to, um, you know, get out of the business of, of zoning regulating. The interior of, of, of homes and structures and sort of, uh, stick to the exterior as best we can. Um, so that's, that's my two cents on it, but I welcome everyone's thoughts and comments.
So, so can you just clarify, what is the change? I, I kind of lost track as we went through it.
Okay, so I'll, I'll repeat it again, I'm sorry for that.
No, no, that, that's fine. So we're not gonna include basements and we're gonna relax the two-bedroom rule? Is that the?
That's it. Those are the two changes. You hit the next head.
Got it. The eighteen hundred square foot will still apply though.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. That's, that's amassing, which is, as Bob pointed out, the exterior of the building.
So if someone builds an eighteen hundred square foot house, they could still finish the basement under this zoning?
Yes.
That's right.
Got it.
Close the porch.
Okay. You wanna do, uh, solar next?
Yes, you wanna do, and.
What do, what do we do, uh, with the fact that it's not include everything that I have? You want me to show the summary, maybe? I can, I can present that.
Do you want to? Go ahead.
I can.
Yeah, why, why, are you able to share your screen?
Yeah. This is, this is, this is the summary of all the changes. Uh, and we can go to the specific ones, but this is, so, so say what it is. These are all. And includes the, uh, the main document and also the two appendixes, A and B. So the first one. Is that small, a medium. Uh, that are ground mounted are allowed in residential as per requirement appendix A and B. Uh, I think on the same phase as accessory use. This is when the solar systems are not on the roof like we usually see everywhere. So if someone wants to put one of those, and there is one, at least one that I have seen in Easton. Uh. That is, uh, is probably a medium, is not, probably a medium size. Uh, but it's ground mounted. And to the best of my knowledge, the, there is nothing there. There is, there is a question that. Uh, when I reviewed this with Alan. Uh, there was a question and it's, uh, related to appendix A, the cover or uses. Is if we want to have. A. Type, a, a. A special permit or not, uh, for the medium size. It's something that requires discussion. I think if I will violate the laws. Uh, to impose a, a site review on that. And I think that if we have a. If, if, sorry, it will be violating the state law if we impose. Uh, for those systems, any, uh, special permit. Uh, I think site review probably is enough. Accessory structures, uh. So they are, they are used under structure, so same thing, uh. So we, we can go and see what, what I wrote instead of seeing the. And, uh, there is a mention here that large scale systems. Uh, they are going to be, uh, only on a, a, on the overlay. Um, there is something I added to parking and lorry, uh. On the, uh, instruction for design of parking places. It permitted to use, uh, solar system and, uh, something that some places are doing currently. Um, on the last care ground mounted that the, uh, the overlay district. There was what I consider a mistake to link the power size of the, uh, solar farm. To area. Uh, so I eliminated the five acre because. Actually, a large size that is defined more than two hundred and fifty kilowatt only needs three acres. So it's a limitation that is not needed. Instead, uh. We should focus on that, what the bylaws say at this point, on the setbacks and the buffer zones around. What is the solar farm? Um. So that is the change, the only change I did on the, uh, uh, overlay district is to eliminate the five acres. And whatever it takes, it takes to make the solar, uh, area of the solar farm. But the boundaries that is for you are interested, uh, should be according to the, uh, appendix B. Where these dimensions are, uh, stated. Uh, also, I. Uh, I added on article eleven that are all the definitions on the bylaws. A special, uh, chapter that, uh, put all the definitions for solar energy systems in one place. With all, uh, the definition for all the terms. Uh, especially, and the, the important thing is the small, medium and large size defined by a power rating. Uh, but there are a lot of, uh, terms there defined. So it's clear what anything related to solar energy systems are about. Uh, on the appendix, appendix A, uh. Uh, uh, the uses are defined and kind of need a little. Uh, review together about what we are going to do. If we are going to, uh, require. A type. Uh, besides that, type plan review, if we think that we want to impose. Special permit for certain cases on certain districts. Um, I can open these two tables and share with you and see, uh, what we want to do about it. Okay, so if, if we go. So this is, uh, accessory uses. So we allow. And we refer to the table. Okay, for uses. And for the.
So. Oh, okay.
And for the definitions of the different sizes, uh, we'll refer to the definitions. This is, uh. Accessory uses. Very similar. Again, it's not due to, to the table. And it, it require. Site plan review for, uh, ground mounted. All the roof mounted are done by, uh, by rights without the need for a site plan review. Uh, I will assume that the, uh, building inspector. So. This is the long ride down. So again, uh. Small and medium ground mounted. Uh, and I didn't know if. The twenty fifth is something that should be just on the table of dimensions and not here. But. So these are ground mounted.
And can you refresh my memory on this? Where is the solar panel overlay district located? For what it comes to large-scale ground mounted?
There are several of them. So the one that you know is the one by the NRT is one of them.
Yeah.
There is, there is one big one also near the regional school.
Okay, yep.
And there is one way, way north there behind, I don't know, if, if you draw a line from Roche Brothers. To the, to the west, you hit it.
Do we know what percentage of the land area in Eastern, those, the overlay district covers?
No, I, I sent that message to, I think I asked Stephanie if she can do the calculation.
Okay, yeah, I'm just curious, cause this, this goes back to that decision that, that came down a couple of years ago and it basically said you need to have. You know, more than one or two percent of your land that allows for large-scale ground-mounted solar. And, you know, I'm not sure if we're there or not in terms of what we've done, what we've done in the past. Um, I, I think, you know, maybe we have an argument based on what you've put together here, Amos, that. You know, we're sort of more on the, the cutting edge and allowing, uh, small and medium scale ground-mounted. So maybe we should be relaxed from that burden of allowing large scale on, uh, on a greater, um, a greater scale. Um, I don't know. It, it, that's sort of an open question in my mind. But, you know, in the event that we're still only around that one to two percent, just one thing for the group to think about. Is maybe we can add more locations to that overlay district that, you know, may not actually. End up being developed in that way. You know, some things that are, you know, pieces of land. Not dissimilar to the way we've viewed some of the, the MBTA district zoning. You know, places that are not likely to be redeveloped for large-scale solar. Just so that we're making sure that we're meeting the requirements and, you know, we, we don't end up with a, you know, heavy-handed court decision. Because we haven't, you know, met the square footage requirements. I don't know what your thought is on that, Amos.
Uh, I have two thoughts, but first I need to understand percentage of what. So is the overlay district, uh, area divided by what? By the total area of Eastern? Divided by what? By the total area of Eastern or by? A part of the.
Or developable land? I don't know.
I I would think the easy calculation would be the total land area, which of course would give you. Larger than what could actually be developed, unlike the M B T A zoning, which specifically stated. You had to look at land that could be developable and you had to remove restricted or wetlands from your. calculation.
I mean, I think that's. The answer is you've got to be able to remove. Wetlands from the calculation, otherwise it would be absurd, in my opinion, but I also thought the decision itself was a little bit absurd.
Uh, the the other thing is. If if to if taller. Farms are going to be developed on land where you need to cut the trees down. Uh, it kind of defeats the purpose too, so. What usually happen everywhere where these solar panels are developed is because there is clear land. That this uses, you know, something that makes sense. Uh, and that's where you usually. Uh, the other day in Brockton, I saw a a driving range. For, you know, gold was transformed into a, you know, into a solar. Farm and perfect.
Those almost though that area that you're referring to though is agricultural land previously back in the day. So although it was open, it was still agricultural use at one point.
Yeah.
Placement, I think is a big issue.
Yeah, and and the law or the the document that you. To do all these reviews. Said that when it comes to agricultural land. Uh, you could, it could be an impediment for developing that into farm. The the law said that the only use. On agricultural land for solar is to be used for the needs of that agricultural land. That's what the law says.
For the agricultural operation on the.
Yeah, right. Is the only thing that is allowed for you to take land for. For solar on on agriculture. But I don't know, do. Do we have on our. Zoning map, a land that is marked for agriculture?
Land that is what almost?
Agricultural land.
We don't have a layer, a G I S layer that specifically identifies land that's in active agricultural use per se. We could, and I I.
Well, isn't the answer because we have, we have to allow agricultural uses on all of our land? Isn't that part of Dover too? The Dover.
Well, yes, you can't, you can't zone against agriculture. You have, well, as I understand it, you, yeah, you have, you have to make accommodations for agricultural. And and certainly Arizona does that. Um, but I'm, I mean, active. Farm land at this point, and then you have prime farm soils which have been identified by the state. Um, as areas that are where the soils are suitable for agricultural use. Um, it's the land, those lands aren't protected, they don't. But. Towns are supposed to give some consideration, especially if you're looking at acquiring open space. Um, trying to protect those soils because once they're removed. You can't recreate them. And that's, I think if you're talking about solar fields on agricultural land, if. If they're removing the topsoil, you would want that stored somewhere, but. That that doesn't seem like a very realistic expectation because. The solar arrays do have a lifespan, but when when that lifespan is up, are you just going to? Install new. Uh, panels or. Convert it to a a different use and back to whatever the prior use was like agriculture.
Can we step back for a minute? I'm a little, sorry, Amos, I just, I'm hoping you can clarify because I'm a little bit confused, so. I think what I'm understanding and I could be wrong is that there's two things here. The first is that. You're proposing changes to what are in the bylaws for large scale systems? And then secondly, no?
No, the only change there is is the limitation of the five acres. That's all.
Okay. But there, but what you're saying is that there isn't right now the ability to. Do smaller, medium scale as an accessory use on residential.
A large only on overlay district. Medium and and small. Ground mounted can be. Anywhere if we do a site review. And there is the big question is. If we even want to entertain entertain a special permit on on a residential area. Because of the. But I I I suggest not to do that. I suggest to put limited on the boundary. Meaning dimensionally and do side review. I I think it will violate the the state law if we apply, there is a. Bob sent me about a month ago, a decision by the court. Uh, in Walpole. Uh, in which a a system was were to be installed and. The, based on the on the zoning laws. Walpole didn't for, didn't want to permit that and the court ruled to override him. Uh, citing that this violates the state law. And I think what Bob was saying is that in the case of Walpole. Their percentage of overlay district was too small or very small. So hence the discussion that we are having now. And my question to Stephanie is you you have. The dimensions, the numbers to make the calculation of how much our overlay district is in percentage of the usable land?
Um, I can, I can do that. Uh, I can't do it. Um, immediately or on demand, but we can do that using our G I S layers because those are um, specific. Zones and we should be able to run a query that would. Give us the total square footage of the overlay, the. Solar photovoltaic overlay districts and then I, you know, I know what the. Square footage is of the town. Within enough that we'd be able to. Determine. Reasonably what the total percentage of the overlay district is of the total town.
I want to thank Amos and Alan and Stephanie for working so hard on this. This is not a, this is a complicated issue. It's one that, um, you know, we really do need to to take a look at, and I appreciate all the work that's gone in. To it, just to wrap up this particular discussion just for tonight, does anyone else have any questions about, you know, what we're, what what is being presented here or just? Like a basic understanding as to why? Okay. Well, thank you, Amos. Yep, go ahead.
Uh, I I wanted to maybe. I wanted to present something, give me a second.
Sure. And then let's just, let's just try to wrap up this one because I do want to talk about the A D U. Which is a similar issue. State law.
While you're bringing that up, I was just, do we have a large scale solar in Eastern? I I I'm not.
Yes.
There are, there are a couple. There's one at the old landfill on Prospect Street.
Oh, that's.
Largest.
I remember.
And then there's one at Stone Hill at the clock farm. There's a smaller one. At the well over by the area of the clock farm, so you know the town, there's a town well over there.
Yep, yep, okay, I'm I'm aware. I just happened to be out for a bike ride going down the Mansfield Bike Path and there's a huge one right off the bike path you can see. I don't know if you've ever ridden that bike path, Stephanie, but about halfway down.
I haven't been on it yet. I need to make an effort to get over there.
Okay. Um, Stephanie, do you want to talk about the A D Us?
Sure, let me go back up. Let's see, where is that?
Just a second, I think I have it now. I just wanted to show where we have questions with Alan. This is terrible views. So this one is. Principal uses. Uh, that will be whatever property, the solar. Small and medium is the principal use, I think. You won't find many of them. But. Roof mounted, for example, is doesn't matter, you always. These are the ones. That we were in question if I suggest not to do C D A. Not to do special permits on those. And keep it on. Side side plan review, same thing. Same thing here.
Wait, so you were suggesting that as to both principal uses and accessory uses for small and?
Yeah. Yeah, but well, accessory use, is this accessory? Wait a minute. Yeah, accessory uses. There is a question if, yeah, in residential area. If if a business in residential area would want to to do a. A C D A, what means special permit, and I I suggest no, but I wanted to discuss with the board.
All right.
I want, I want an opinion.
I mean, I tend to agree with you, at at least on the law. I'm not, I'm not sure that we could do much more than. You know, put some reasonable. You know, maybe set back restrictions and things of that nature, height restrictions and all that. Uh, but I tend to agree with you. I'm not, I'm not sure we can just say no.
I I wanted to get to that, let me stop share that. And share the other one, the, I have, I just have it here.
Okay, so do you want me to talk about the A D U now?
No.
We're gonna give you two more minutes to wrap it up.
Yeah. So this is, this is. This is the table that I wanted to show in which you establish, but these numbers are just. Came up with some numbers because they wanted to put something, but I don't know if this are, you know, they make sense. This is what we actually want to. Establish for setbacks and all that.
And they don't, we don't, we don't have any state guidance on this almost.
No.
It's just totally baffling to me.
Yes.
That that the legislature years ago put this in place and. They don't provide any kind of guidance, even after you get that sort of wonky decision from the S G C. That's mind blowing.
So I I I tell you, I have been in contact with an expert that graciously helped me. Define the the size in kilowatts and everything else. And this number five fifty is what it will take. To keep trees free around the solar if you have a solar farm. For the trees not to cast shade. And make the solar system. You know, unusable ba- basically. Uh, if you know anyone putting solar on their house, the first thing they take is the trees around the house. And people need to take trees down in order to, you know, put solar. So. That P T has some logic behind that.
Okay. All right, well, we're gonna, we're gonna pause there on on that issue and hopefully we'll get some feedback from the public, but thank you again for that thorough presentation. And all your hard work on it. Um, Stephanie, uh, A D Us.
Okay, so I think, uh, well, we talked about this at the last meeting, the state as part of the, oh gosh, the housing. Can't remember the exact name of the the bill. But to promote. And more. Housing types and help. Address the housing crisis in Massachusetts, the state. Added to. Chapter forty A and. Um, section three, it's three, right? Not three A. That um, A D Us are an allowed use by right. The. Gross floor area of an A D U. Shall not exceed fifty percent of the gross habitable living area of the primary single family dwelling unit or nine hundred square feet, whichever is smaller. However, um, a board town could issue a special permit for up to fifty percent of the gross habitable area. Unit above nine hundred square feet where they determine the A D U will be. Constructed so as to maintain the appearance. Um, so. Let me back up a minute. Basically, what the state said was. Accessory dwelling units. Are allowed by right as long as they are. Either fifty percent of the gross floor area or nine hundred square feet of the gross floor air area of an existing. Building. Whichever is less. Um, in Eastern right now, we allow in-law apartments. Up to twenty five percent of the gross floor area or nine hundred square feet, whichever is less. And by special permit, um, more than twenty five percent. Up to nine hundred square feet by special permit. So when the twenty five percent is less than nine hundred square feet. Someone can come and apply for a special permit. And the board could could allow up to nine hundred square feet of. And in an A D U or in this case, the town, it's in-law apartments. The state. Does not allow. The A D U to be restricted by occupancy by a family member. Or that a family member occupy the main. Living area. And. They don't. Allow restriction of whether it is a attached. Dwelling unit or additional accessory dwelling unit or if it is a standalone dwelling unit. So our proposed changes are to increase our twenty five percent minimum. Um, to the fifty percent to match the state. To. Uh, not distinguish between attached or detached. And you still have the conditions which the state identifies that an A D U will be a complete separate housekeeping unit containing both kitchen and bath. It must be accessory to a single principal dwelling. And only one A D U may be created on any lot. However, there may be. The board may allow more by special permit if that is something that you want to contemplate.
From it, what do you, what do you mean when you say it must be accessory to a single family dwelling?
That you can't have and it wouldn't be. It's kind of. I I want to say, is it an oxymoron that? When you say, because it is an accessory dwelling unit, right? So of course it has to be accessory to something and it would, it would be accessory to a. A principal dwelling unit. I don't know why it would be any more, why you'd have it any more than one because. You, we don't really allow multiple principal dwelling units on a lot.
Well, yeah, that's, that's true, I guess, but it's a little confusing because. You know, theoretically, it is a, it could be a principal dwelling unit. And that's why I, I don't know.
But it's, it it's an accessory dwelling unit, not a principal.
I know it, but it's not an accessory use.
Correct. And in fact.
Maybe, maybe I'm quibbling. Maybe, maybe I'm quibbling. But.
Uh, it's, it's not a use block, it's, it's a, it's a dwelling, it's a, it's a residential unit. It's something that comes to fight the one unit per acre uh, that we, we have been paying uh, in this for forever. Uh, in order to increase the density of population and the density of building.
Amos, I cannot hear you very well at all.
You are pretty low. It's hard to hear you.
And while he's figuring that out, I, I thought I read somewhere that the, that the state was actually gonna be promulgating some guidance on this sometime fairly soon. Have you heard any update on that, Stephanie?
Haven't heard anything or seen anything, and we're on all the general mailing lists from HLC on these type of topics. So unless I've just missed it and the myriad emails we get, but Wayne, you know, Wayne also is on those lists.
Okay.
Stephanie, so they got rid of the requirement?
Now you should, now you should.
The, I'm, I'm sorry?
They, they removed the requirement that one of the owners had to live either in the principal or the secondary?
In, in the principal unit.
Okay, but it used to be that the, the, somebody in the family could also live in the accessory.
Someone, well, that was kind of the presumption that someone would because, I, I mean, under our bylaw, it was called in-law apartment and that was the assumption. Um, and I, yeah.
So under the new one, can you have two front facing entrances to the street? Cause you used to have to have a subordinate entrance to the accessory dwelling unit, if I recall.
So um, the way this is written is any front facing entrance must be subordinate in appearance to the main entrance?
That's kind of hard. Standard doorway is a standard doorway facing front.
I mean, that comment like sort of similar to what I was concerned about.
I think that the, so in our bylaw, this was intended, um, and I think the state basically said you could, I, I don't know if it actually stated that it would be subordinate, but that was put in place. By the planning board a little while, not too long ago.
Yeah, it was to try to avoid the, you know, the
It wouldn't be smaller, but it wouldn't be as, like, you wouldn't have your ornate front door with lights or transoms and, and then have the same for your accessory dwelling unit.
I don't think it's specified in the new state guidance.
Yeah. But I bet the state didn't prohibit against that, so that I carried that forward. Yeah, the board can, again, this is for board comment and then, let's see, we have the gross square footage where um, um, ADUs shall comply with any and all setback height and lot coverage requirements as specified in appendix B. We have only one ADU is allowed as a matter of right. Additional ADUs may be allowed with the issuance of a special permit by the planning board. And then construction of an ADU over an existing attached or detached garage is allowed by right.
Okay.
As part of, in, in conjunction with that, we, um, and in response to feedback that we received from the AG's office on the MBTA zoning article. Um, they commented on definition of family. So instead of one or more persons, including domestic employees occupying a dwelling unit and living as a single nonprofit housekeeping unit, provided that groups of five or more persons who are not related by blood or marriage. And this get truncated in one of the versions of the um, definitions of the code, it seems in two thousand sixteen. But what it did say originally was that where unrelated persons a group of five or more persons who are not within the second degree of kinship shall be deemed to constitute a family. So again, you're just defining and restricting what a family unit is. So the proposed change is either one or more persons, including domestic employees, occupying a dwelling unit and living as a single nonprofit housekeeping unit, which is pretty basic, or residential household or family, one person or a group of two or more persons occupying a single dwelling unit or rooming unit within a residence and living together as a single household unit, including but not limited to occupants who are handicapped persons is defined under title eight of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-eight as amended by the Bear Housing Acts of nineteen eighty-eight, but not including persons who occupy separate rooming units within a lodging house. A little more specific, the longer um, it's up to the board.
Alright, well, we'll get some feedback on it from the public as well. Alright, but we do actually have to vote on something, actually, maybe two more things tonight. Uh, the first is Stephanie, do you want to fill us in on this stormwater management issue? This is again, this is more of a housekeeping uh, issue as I understand it, but I, but I'm sure you could fill everyone in a lot better than me.
Yes, so the um, USA, uh, you, the United States Environmental Protection Agency um, requires that communities under their MS four, which is municipal stormwater s- separate stormwater sewer system, um, which keeps your stormwater um, clean and tries to keep it from polluting water bodies and um, various areas and causing flooding. That communities adopt a stormwater management bylaw. And in, this requirement went into effect in two thousand sixteen. At that time, the town adopted a bylaw. Um, and subsequent to that adoption, when, and that bylaw basically talked about the methods of stormwater management. It did not address the administrative process of stormwater management, which means who's doing the review, who's making sure that pre-construction and post-construction projects are properly handling and treating their stormwater. On pro- projects where the disturbance is more than an acre in um, land area. Or is a part of a larger project that will disturb more than about um, more than an acre of land area. And so Easton's bylaw really addressed the type of structures and types of ways that the stormwater would be handled, but did not do the administrative aspect of it. And when the EPA reviewed the bylaw, they indicated that the town needed to adopt a bylaw that addressed the administrative process. And that is what this zoning is recommending. I don't know that, did we include that? We didn't include it in the, a draft of the zoning in the binder for this meeting, but you will be sent that to review. And it identifies the, as the administrators, the planning board and the conservation commission. So where stormwater is in, or a project is in an area that requires a permit from the conservation commission, they will be the administrator. And all other will be the planning board. It's no different than what is happening today. Um, any project that comes before the planning board that is over an acre of disturbance or meets the stormwater standard, um, the stormwater management requirements under the state bylaw get reviewed for both pre-construction and post-construction stormwater management. So this really just formalizes that and puts it into the town code and needs the requirement of the EPA.
Does anyone have any, any questions or comments on this one? Cause we, we do need to vote on whether or not to add this to the public hearing and it seems more of a housekeeping issue than anything else.
That's what I think. We, we have been doing this for years since I am on the board and it's just not written down, that's all.
Yes, e- exactly.
Can I motion to include it in the public hearing? So move.
Sigman, second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Weeks?
Aye.
Kid?
Aye.
Zigman?
Aye.
Kedam?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
And Stetsons and I as well. So we will add that. Um, Stephanie, on the street acceptances, do we have to vote to add this as well, or did we already do that? I can't recall.
Um, no, you don't need to vote to add it. And so actually, one of these, I'm not ready to recommend that the board recommend, which is Sherwood Drive. This is a project that really didn't come before the planning board. It is a leftover road from a subdivision from the nineteen seventies that was completed, all except for this particular road. It's a very short um, cul-de-sac. There are three or four lots that are served by Sherwood Drive. And what happened is that the developers, I, for some reason, never completed it and then they um, they died and the children inherited the project. And they wanted to get it completed and they've been working towards completion on it, but there is still one final change that needs to happen before it will be accepted, uh, acceptable to DPW. There um, the wheelchair ramp and the sidewalk pitch are not, they're greater than two percent, which is not acceptable. And they need to do a little work on the landscaping, abutting the sidewalk and in a manhole cover. So I don't know if it's really going to be ready in time for town meeting. Um, we can put this on the October eighth meeting for discussion. And it also needs to go before the select board. The second one, Victory Lane was a project that was approved. It was a subdivision that was approved for six houses and a roadway and cul-de-sac to be accepted by the town. Members of the board, I think, um, I think Amos and Bob were on the board when we talked about the fact that the developer defaulted on finishing the road. And we needed to take the surety and complete the road ourselves, which the planning, um, I'm sorry, the DPW did do. And now it is ready to be accepted at town meeting. Um, the article will actually be to take the road either by eminent domain or by purchase. Because again, the developer has um, defaulted and it looks like the title isn't, they didn't retain title to the center line um, from they didn't retain t- full title throughout the roadway that two of the properties at least still owned to the central line. And there'll be a process that the town will need to go to, to be able to take that. But we have an article that authorizes the select board to take those steps necessary. And we have uh, butters along the road, the houses that the roadway serves who are very interested in getting the road accepted by the town.
So, so that's also one that we don't really need to deal with because it's gonna go through the eminent domain process? Is that what I'm hearing?
On that one, the board does need to recommend to the select board um, accepting the road. So that the select board know that the road's in, in the condition it should be so that they can proceed with the process of wiring.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so do we have to vote on that to add that to public hearing?
Suzanne, does that? Suzanne?
She's on mute.
Yes. Question is, did we advertise that?
I don't know.
No, I think you, you did advertise them. About this, I think these get advertised at the, the select board.
Oh, it's a different process.
Goes, right, you're right, it's a public notice. Plan, so the, the board's role is to recommend to the select board, who then corrects the haring and does the road acceptance or the, it's called the laying out of the road.
Right, and it's a public meeting with the select board.
Is it just a motion to recommend?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Second, kid?
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Weeks?
Aye.
Kid?
Aye.
Zigmond?
Aye.
Kedam?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
And Stetsons and I as well. Did everyone have a chance to take a look at the meeting minutes?
Okay, by me.
Second? Did I hear a second?
Oh, second, sorry.
No problem. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Weeks?
Aye.
Kid?
Aye.
Zigmond?
Aye.
Kedam?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
And Stetsons and I as well. Um, so th- the, the last business that I, I need to talk about is the um, the planning board rap for the master plan update committee. I think it, we sent around a notice to everyone on the, on the board about that, right, Stephanie?
For, yes, I'm.
I think, I think everybody got it.
Got it, yep.
Okay. I'm sorry, last week was the, I think the craziest week I've ever had here.
The, the whole idea here is that there's gonna be a committee um, put together with, you know, uh, cross-section of people throughout the community in the um, to really update the master plan. Um, naturally, as the planning and zoning board, we're gonna have a representative on that. Um, and, you know, tonight we have to select somebody to, to do that. Um, Stephanie, can you tell everyone a little bit about what's anticipated in terms of the time commitment and when the meetings are gonna happen and all that?
So the um, we actually submitted an RFP. We're going to be working with a consultant and hire a consultant to help um, with this effort. And they will help um, importantly, updating demographic information, helping the committee, so we're forming the committee. The committee will be reviewing the action plan that was part of the Envision East in two thousand fourteen master plan. And um, identifying what goals and objectives and actions have been completed or achieved. And then ones that may not have been, um, and should continue. And then others that maybe are, are no longer relevant to this, at this point in time. Um, and also helping to promote the update to the public at large and communicate that this is happening, that public input is very important as part of this process. And the consultant will help put together that public input strategy and, and plan. So at this point in time, we're anticipating um, the, the project will go for at least a year. I mean, honestly, it will take about that amount of time. And in at least the first six to eight months, um, if not through the first twelve months, it will be a, a monthly commitment. The, I would expect that the board will meet on a monthly basis. That could change. Um, there may be times when it makes sense to have a meeting a little sooner than within a month. Or we're at a point where there's work being done, maybe there are drafts that are being written that can be distributed and reviewed and feedback provided um, outside of a, a meeting schedule. that can be distributed and reviewed and feedback provided um outside of a, a meeting schedule. But I would count on at least a meeting a month.
Any questions, comments, volunteers?
I, I'd like to do a little bit of a pitch for this. I mean, one of, one of the things, a lot of communities will create a master plan and it goes on a shelf. And then many, many, many years later, um, the, the town or city says, you know, we, we really need to have a strategy for what we want the community to look like ten, fifteen years from now. Easton's master plan has been a very integral part of planning and policy and decision-making over the last ten years. You know, you, you see it when I write the staff reports, we look at a project and does this fit in with the and, and, you know, we can't deny projects because they might not fit exactly in with the master plan. But the fact of how, um, you know, what the zoning changes are and the decisions that the board makes around zoning really ties into the master plan. And if you look at the type of infrastructure projects that the town has invested in, the type of grants that we go after, the other policies that, uh, decisions that the town makes and housing and um, even, even investing in projects like recreation projects. Everybody looks, at least on this end, we look at how does that fit in with that master plan and the goals of the plan.
Stephanie, are the meetings gonna be in-person or virtual? And do you know like days a week yet, or is that kind of still up in the air?
We don't, we don't, and that will, that will be decided once the committee meets. So the first meeting will probably be to review the responses, the RFP responses for the consultants, which are coming in on Wednesday. And to select the consultant and then working with the consultant in the committee will determine. So I'll, I will send out a date. I have October sixteenth as the first meeting date. And then at that first meeting, we'll talk about um what the best schedule is for everyone who's participating. And, and the consultant.
Definitely be interested unless, I was just gonna say, I'm definitely interested in participating unless somebody else is. Uh, my schedule can be a little chaotic, that's the only thing that I kind of have a concern about, but I can probably hopefully work around that. Unless there's somebody else that wants to do it. Cause everybody's got so much free time these days.
Well, let's uh, let's maybe entertain a motion.
Motion to nominate Joanne to the master plan committee, Wolf.
Second, kid?
All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, weeks?
Aye.
Kid?
Aye.
Kedham?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Zigmond?
Aye.
And Stetson's and I as well, congrats and thank you. I'll, I'll, we'll, we'll, I'll look forward to the updates. I mean, I don't think it's lost on me that Alan spent so much time looking through some of the uh prior work that was done. And I think it's, it's, it's a use, you know, it's, it's useful when it comes to the planning uh in zoning board especially, so, so thank you and we'll be looking forward to the updates.
You're welcome. If I may, I just wanna add that what Stephanie said about Easton actually using their plan is so true. We write at my organization, we write a lot of these master plans for communities and they do often just gather dust. They're pretty awesome to, to live and be able to volunteer for a community that actually properly uses it.
Wow, really good stuff.
I, I have a question, Stephanie, what is, what is the plan? Where you can access and read that?
So you can go to the pla- I think it's both the planning board and the planning department webpage from the town website. And on the left-hand side, in that left nag, navigation bar, there is a link to plans and reports. And there's a link to, um, once you click on that, you'll see a link to the master plan. And there are three volumes.
Yeah, I need, and I, I love words, little berry there, okay.
We're going to try to uncover that again. And in fact, there's a master, master plan update page already out there. We have a master plan committee page.
Excellent. All right, in, in terms of chair updates, there's only one. We have the October eighth uh meeting coming up and that's where we're gonna open up the public hearing. I unfortunately will be away from the eighth through the sixteenth. So um, Mickey, uh, I'm gonna be looking to you to uh, open up the public hearing on the zoning amendments. Thank you.
Well timed.
And um, but thank you all for committing to the October seventeenth meeting because I could not have made the fifteenth and I really appreciate you guys, um, you know, being so flexible. So um, thank you for that. Um, any planning director updates, Stephanie?
I don't, that's
It's a lot going on.
There's a lot going on and a lot of it, it, well, all revolves around this board.
All right, well, uh, I will accept a motion.
Motion to adjourn, Kedham?
Second.
Second.
Second, Zigmond.
All right, uh, weeks?
Aye.
Kid?
Aye.
Zigmond?
Aye.
Kedham?
Aye, and good night.
Wolf?
Aye.
Stetson's and I as well, and good night to you all. Thank you, guys.
Okay, bye-bye.
Good night, everyone, thank you.